Good evening, happy Wednesday. We are calling this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Let's start by our pledge of allegiance. If you can unmute yourself and place your right hand on your heart. Let's begin. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States.
It's America.
And to the republic of the free and open world.
For which we stand.
For which we stand.
And for God.
And the visible.
With liberty and justice.
Thanks team, make sure to mute yourselves again. And I will turn it over to Veronica who will share our public comments.
Hi everyone, I wanted to just first say that we have a total of thirty-three comments. And myself and the school committee clerk Mariana Seja will be splitting up the reading. I will start with stating comment number and the person who submitted the comment. And then can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so comment one from Stacy Amaral from residing at fifty Botswana Way four oh one in Chelsea. I am thinking of Chelsea Opportunity Academy as the school of ongoing learning. As the grandmother and guardian of one of COA's students, I see firsthand how it works. And it does work. My grandson who grew up, sorry, I lost my screen. My grandson who grew up in Chelsea and started school at the ELC is a bright young man who struggled in, quote, "regular classes," even on a five oh four and IEP. Last year, he recognized his need for a different way of being in school and applied on his own to COA. At the moment, he is on track to graduate at the beginning of June. I know that this would not have been the case if he didn't have the support of the staff at COA. My grandson is not alone in his need for an alternative school experience. As someone who with others started a dropout prevention program for Latino students in Worcester, I feel particularly well-suited to speak to the need for alternatives. COA works because of the staff. They are dedicated and joyous in their tasks. They meet the students where they are and with them help find the path forward. Clearly, we now have an opening towards creativity in education. With the new funding from the state, we need to be very wise in how we use the money. If we know that some of the old ways didn't work, we need to look at new paths. As a veteran of the old ways and school reform, I feel more creative approaches are called for. COA is clearly one of these. COA needs the support of the Chelsea community as a whole, of the school committee in particular, so that all kids find a path to a healthy and successful life. Comment two. Submitted by Adam Aronson residing at five fifty Victory Road, Quincy, Mass. School committee members, superintendent, CPS staff, students, parents, and our Chelsea community, good evening. My name is Adam Aronson and I am the coordinator of the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. In my short seven years as part of the CPS family, I have worn a lot of hats. A track coach, special education teacher, and dean of students at the high school. Then to design team member, lead teacher, C2 union rep of COA, and now in my current role as coordinator, the logistics guy. Most of us know what COA is. We are a school and we are a family. When a decision is made in our school, from policy changes to school functions, all are consulted, especially students. It is with that spirit today that I speak on behalf of the entire COA family, some of which sit before you today. We are very excited to see that COA, that a COA school building is currently in the 2019-2020 budget proposal. Here is what this means to our COA family and our neighbors at CHS. COA core value number one is that in our school, every day is a new day. Students and staff will welcome every day as an opportunity to learn and grow. And every quarterly, in every quarterly student survey, our students report that having to walk the same hallways and sit in the same classrooms that they had so many challenges in is one of the main reasons that they miss school at COA. We have promised them a fresh start and a new building fulfills this promise. This also means a lot for the continued partnership between COA and CHS. Next year, we will upscale from a hundred students to a hundred and fifty. It would be impossible to do so in our current location at CHS. Currently, we take up five classrooms at CHS. As staff, we are happy to be flexible team players. However, when we have high attendance days and students request to leave early because our space is too crowded, that is when we must act. It simply is not possible to run our school within CHS while upscaling without taking over more of CHS's already cramped space. Thank you for your time and your continued support of our little school that could. Thank you from me personally and from all members of the COA family. Comment number three, Joel Fagerbird, twenty-one Brookline Street, four oh two, Cambridge. To whom it may concern. As a third grade inclusion classroom teacher at the Frank M Sokolowski School, I believe our number one priority for the budget should be to expand access, opportunity, and equity for all students in our schools. I believe all other efforts to increase student achievement rests upon this foundation. Moreover, as teachers in a gateway city, I believe it is our moral obligation to ensure our schools are meeting the needs of all our students. This means having robust federal education and English learner staffs at our school. There is nothing that can replace the impact these members have on the lives and education of these students. Not only can they use their teaching expertise to make learning more accessible for their students, they can also create important relationships with students that make them feel safe, cared for, and respected in school. Furthermore, increased staff with expertise in these fields will make inclusion efforts more successful. This results in more inclusive and equitable classrooms where students on IEPs and students learning English can participate and learn more. Increased special ed and EL staff will also positively impact students who are not on those caseloads. Many teaching, sorry, many teaching and classroom management strategies that may seem targeted to students on IEPs or students learning English actually benefits all students. These strategies normalize a classroom culture in which it is acknowledged that all students do not learn the same way. This results in a classroom that is ultimately more student-centered. Also, increased special ed and EL staff means better student-to-teacher ratios. This means more individualized attention for all students, less disruptions, and a safer classroom environment. Expanding access, opportunity, and equity depends on creating classrooms where all students are supported and valued. I believe that starts with having teachers who best know their needs and can best respond to them. Our teachers and their families depend on our schools to help kids learn and grow, no matter what challenges they may face. We must increase special ed and EL staff to meet that goal. Comment number four, Sarah Ruddy, Hundred Stockton Street, apartment one fifty-six in Chelsea. Dear Dr. Abada, I am a tenth grade inclusion ELA teacher at CHS. This is my third full year. I work with a co-teacher and we share our classroom with some of the most wonderful, loving, curious, tough, and vulnerable students at CHS. Many of these kids have IEPs and are able to overcome significant challenges to grow and achieve an ELA and pass the MCAS every March. They amaze us every year with what they can do. When our thirty students in our classroom, when there are thirty students in our classroom, as was the case in two of our three sections this school year. Our other section had twenty-six. Kids are put at a disadvantage the minute they walk through the door. They are crowded into desks and often are shoulder to shoulder. Though two teachers who love to circulate and work with these kids one-on-one during student-centered tasks, the room becomes impossible to move in. Kids are restless enough as teenagers, they're supposed to be. When they are crammed into a space like this, they struggle to focus and stay in task. Tenth grade inclusion ELA is an MCAS subject and we start a huge disadvantage with these class sizes. We won't be able to keep making gains if we can't get these classes sizes down. And that's just the physical problems of an understaffed school. When we send kids to a class in a tiny room with twenty-nine other kids, we also send them a message, nobody cares if they succeed. You know, you know, and I know that isn't true. And we spend a lot of time showing kids how much we do care. But when a school our size has classes that large and deans have caseloads of five hundred and counselors and social workers have only slightly less, sometimes I wonder if I were these kids, would I believe it? I am amazed every day at how much our school does with what we have. But I also feel it is unsustainable at the level and certainly will be more so if cuts continue. Fully staffing schools by allocating more budget money to direct contact staff, teachers, counselors, deans, behavioral specialists, paraprofessionals, librarians sends our kids a strong message that we want them to succeed and that we care deeply about their futures. That is the most valuable message these kids can get right now. In this, in this world that tells them every day how little they matter as their community rebuilds. Thank you for your time. Comment number five. Daria Carey, twenty-one Ridgewood Road, Cumberland, Rhode Island. Good morning, I am writing with regard to Chelsea Public Schools budget and the benefits of the arts for children. Not only the benefits of the arts for academic and personal outcomes such as motor skill development, visual spatial skills, executive function like working memory, mental flexibility, and self-control, but the benefits of the arts for the social emotional aspect as well. Arts participation is associated with numerous positive academic and personal outcomes such as higher grades and test scores, enrollment in post-secondary education, entertainment of a bachelor's degree, and a higher level of literacy and civic engagement. Arts participation also promotes children's social emotional development by fostering positive social skills, regulation of emotions, openness to innovation, and connections with new people and ideas. Art instruction can encourage school participation and attendance and lead to greater student self-esteem and motivation. These positive changes can improve overall classroom climate as well. The benefits of art participation might be greatest for children who are economically disadvantaged, such as many of our students living in Chelsea. The favorable outcomes associated with high levels of arts participation are particularly strong to students from families with lower socioeconomic status. For example, arts participation lowers cortisol levels, a biological marker for stress, for low-income preschoolers and kindergartners. Young people from poor communities also tend to benefit from having one or more projects that strengthen their sense of self and connect with their peers that share interests. Now more than ever, the arts are a necessary outlet in education for children, especially in, especially the young children we foster to at the John Silver Early Learning Center. Many schools are incorporating art therapists. Art therapy can be used as a complement to traditional mental health treatment. The aim is to manage behaviors, process feelings, reduce stress and anxiety, and increase self-esteem. Creating art can be used to relieve stress and relax your mind and body. As this terrible pandemic continues and has such a detrimental effect on our economy, I implore you to not only keep the adventurous art program that we have in Chelsea, but to explore the avenues that the arts can encourage and promote the well-being of our vulnerable students. Thank you for your time.
Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Comment number six from Nina Larry resides at thirty-seven Sixth Street, Medford, Mass. I am a teacher at Chelsea High School and I am writing to let you know how critical it is that the Chelsea Public Schools have adequate staffing. When our schools don't have the teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff they need, student learning is negatively impacted. My first year teaching in Chelsea Public Schools, I had classes of thirty-two, thirty-one, and twenty-nine. When the classes are this large, teachers struggle to provide adequate support to students and in turn, students are the ones who suffer. Please do not allow our schools to be understaffed. Our students deserve a great education. Without reasonably sized classes and access to support staff, we are not meeting the needs of our students. We owe it to our students to make sure our schools are fully staffed. Thank you. Comment number seven from Beth Crowley resides at Seventh Forester Street, Salem, Mass. Good evening, my name is Beth Crowley and I am a sixth grade science teacher in the Chelsea School District. I wanted to express my sincere gratitude for having the opportunity to work in Chelsea. Working with the students that I have has been such a wonderful experience. And I look forward continuing my career in the district. I'm writing to stress my support of the budget, especially to communicate how important it is to have quality staff to support our students. Perhaps even more now than ever, with the current situation and the surge of the coronavirus, it is going to be vital to have a solid support system for our students when they return to school in August. Any kind of cuts or positions is devastating to our school community and we are just not able to give the quality education our students deserve without the proper resources. Please take the consideration of our students, families, and staff when you are making decisions about the budget. Thank you. Comment number eight from Brittany Fitzgibbons resides at one oh nine Olive Ave in Malden, Mass. My name is Brittany Fitzgibbon and I teach history at Chelsea High School. My priority for the budget is maintaining and increasing the number of adults working directly with our students in schools. Maintaining teacher levels is critical to student safety and student academic growth. In my fourth period US one history class, I teach thirty freshmen. My classroom was so overly full that when they asked if I could fit another freshman into my class, we literally did not have enough room, tables, chairs, Chromebooks. So instead, he stayed in a tenth grade history class. This is exacerbated by the fact that they are so few freshman history teachers that scheduling students with particular needs, like students who need preferential seating or benefit from two adults in the room or are unable to be with certain other students is nearly impossible as demonstrated by that poor freshman who ended up in a class too advanced for him. Another challenge you have to consider is that each guidance counselor is responsible for scheduling hundreds of students, which leaves them little time to support the SEL needs of students who would most benefit from their expertise and a close relationship. How can we as teachers and counselors support the collective and individual trauma of returning students with these numbers of students? How can you expect us as a staff to transition back into the classroom after our own terrible pandemic experience if we are walking into a situation where we are being set up to fail? In addition to the emotional and physical safety concerns of overcrowded classrooms amid coronavirus, students are not getting the support or attention they need. When my freshman classes needed to turn in their final essays for quarter three, I knew it was frankly impossible to support every student. I had senior AP history students with a free fourth period come in to help students complete their work because even with grouping, I cannot help all students. This exhausting scenario coupled with our school being a guinea pig for every new buzzword initiative contributes to our terrible turnover rate, meaning our students lose out on the most experienced teachers and guidance counselors. If you expect to see the kind of MCAS gains that you saw for the class of 2021, then you need to reduce class sizes and counselor loads at the high school and all Chelsea Public Schools. Staff reductions hurt everyone. Students, teachers, support staff, custodians, and cafeteria workers. It is unforgivable, unforgivable to cut teachers without cutting from central office and administration. We do not need dozens of instructional coaches, assistants, superintendents, and other adults who are not directly working with students. They are not even directly working with teachers every day. Our students deserve better. Allocate money to hiring more teachers, counselors, deans, behavioral specialists, and paraprofessionals. Thank you. Comment number nine from Valerie Smith resides at one fifty-nine Bloomingdale Street in Chelsea, Mass. Dear esteemed colleagues in education, my name is Valerie Smith. I have been a kindergarten teacher at the Silver Early Learning Center for the past twenty years. Prior to this time period, I was a paraprofessional in the Chelsea school system. I am also a lifelong Chelsea resident and a graduate of Chelsea Public Schools. I am writing to urge you all to fully fund the 2020-2021 school budget as it was presented. Our students deserve to have fully-staffed schools in order to maximize their additional opportunities and experiences. It takes all of us to educate and care for our students. Our students come to us with various levels of background knowledge and educational experiences. It is imperative that we provide these students with the best instruction possible where they can receive appropriate detailed attention and intervention. I have seen how difficult it is when teaching staff, which includes specialists, guidance counselors, social workers, et cetera, is reduced and class sizes increase. Students suffer both educationally and emotionally. As we continue to navigate these unprecedented times, it is our obligation to ensure that the students of Chelsea receive the quality of education we have all worked so hard to deliver. I appreciate the work you do on behalf of our students and wish to thank you for providing an opportunity for me to share my thoughts. Comment number ten from Katie Devoe. I am a second grade teacher at Hooks where I have been teaching for the past six years. Thank you for, I am, sorry, thank you for all the work you are doing for our schools and students. I wanted to make two comments with regard to the budget. First, thank you for working to retain current positions for the upcoming school year. It is essential that teaching and support positions are retained so our students can have as much support as possible in the fall, whether that is online or in person. Second, thank you for continuing to advocate for the Student Opportunity Act funds. Our students will greatly benefit from the additional special education and English language teaching positions as well as the additional support staff, librarians, nurses, parent liaison, social workers, et cetera. Your work towards securing those funds is greatly appreciated and vital for student success. Thank you again for all that you do. Stay safe, Katie.
Comment number eleven, Jamie Connors, teacher at the ELC. Dear school committee members, my name is Jamie Connors and I am a teacher for the Chelsea Public Schools. It is an honor to be an educator for the Chelsea Public Schools. I work alongside the most dedicated and driven educational professionals. We have all worked tirelessly to adapt to the new distance learning plan to provide our students the most effective instruction and support possible during this pandemic. On behalf of the Chelsea Teachers Union, I ask that you approve the budget presented by the superintendent to ensure our students continue to success. Thank you. Comment number twelve, Teraz Bova, five Stone Street, Saugus. Dear school committee members, I hope you and your families are healthy and safe. I am writing in the hope that you will vote favorably for the least level funding, for at least level funding for our school community. As you know, our teachers work tirelessly to not only educate the child but consider the entire family's needs as much as we can, as demonstrated during this awful time. Our teachers and educational system must be a priority. Your work as school committee members is appreciated by all. Comment number thirteen, Amy Klein. Dear members of the Chelsea School Committee, my name is Amy Klein and I am a first grade teacher at the Early Learning Center. I have been working for the Chelsea Public Schools for almost twenty years. I am writing today to consider the importance of continuing the fund for our current staff, which is vital to educate the students of Chelsea. The students and families in our city value and rely on each member of the various schools and now more than ever, we need to continue to be there for them. Please consider allocating sufficient funds to support the current staff. We understand these are unprecedented and difficult times for many, but we cannot afford to make the future of our city bear the burden of not providing them with the quality education they deserve. Thank you for your efforts and hearing my concerns. Comments number fourteen. Katarina Korokova, sixteen Myrtle Street, second floor, Somerville. As a teacher for, as a teacher for, has worked, who has worked at the high. Sorry, I was muted there for a second. Comment number fourteen, Katarina Korokova, sixteen Myrtle Street, second floor, Somerville. As a teacher who has worked for the high school for five years, I believe, no, I know it is crucial for funding to be allocated in such a way that ensures that we maintain an equitable student-teacher ratio in our classrooms and provide students with quality support staff. Every single one of our children matters. Every single one of our children matters. Limit the number of educators, paraprofessionals, and support staff would be to do a gross disservice to our already vulnerable student population. Our students have the potential to be teachers, doctors, lawyers, lawmakers, engineers, thinkers, and tinkerers. And when you shove them in droves into classrooms where the teacher is overwhelmed by the sheer number of students, we strip them of these future opportunities. Our students deserve to have what their peers in affluent white communities have, smaller classroom sizes and individual attention. Sorry, are you guys getting static for me? Yeah. Do you want me to repeat this last comment?
Veronica, we heard the last comment.
Oh, okay.
But there's just a bit of static. It sounds like you're rustling, like rustling with papers.
Okay. All right, so I'll go back where I left off. Our students deserve to have what their peers in affluent white communities have, smaller classroom sizes and individual attention from a supportive and knowledgeable teacher. When you overwhelm support staff with a large number of students whom they cannot possibly properly support given the number of needs, you strip our students of the opportunity to be individually bolstered, listened to, cared for, and tended to in the way that every child deserves. Let me repeat that every single one of our children matters. And when you decrease the number of people who are available physically and emotionally to support them, And when you decrease the number of people who are available physically and emotionally to support them, you decrease the opportunities for a successful future. Understaffing our school will lead to greater teacher and support staff burnout and turnover. A person can only work in a stressful, stressful environment for so long before their nervous system gives out. And it will be, and it will lead to greater numbers of underserved students who are not reaching their potential. By understaffing schools and overwhelming both teachers and the children whom they teach as well as the guidance counselor, social workers who support each, each in their endeavor, we contribute to a vicious cycle of racism whereby we strip children of the right to an equitable education. We need teachers, we need guidance counselors, we need social workers, we need paraprofessionals. Give our students what they deserve because that is our duty to the students that we serve and to the staff members whom you support. Comment number fifteen, Catherine Bandera, Nineteen Terrace Hall Avenue, Burlington. Dear School Committee, Today to voice my concern about the budget that has been proposed for the 2020 school year. Our students, especially those who have disabilities, deserve to learn in a safe and nurturing environment where their individual needs can be met. The proposed budget, which includes no new positions for Chelsea High School despite initial assurances that nine positions will be restored or added, will directly harm our students. Its negative impact will be exacerbated by the collective trauma and long gap in learning that has resulted from the COVID-19 pandemic. In this time of crisis, it is imperative that we prioritize the needs of students adequately staffing our schools. I work at the high school as a special education teacher in a cold talk classroom. My role in the classroom is to help meet grade level curriculum accessible to students with IEPs, individual education programs. By providing extra support, designing scaffold catered, scaffold catered to students' individual needs and making sure student IEP accommodations are implemented with fidelity. Executing these duties becomes very difficult and sometimes almost impossible when classrooms are filled to capacity because desperately needed positions have been cut. This year, my co-teacher and I taught a class of thirty students. A sizable proportion had IEPs. While it was our job to ensure all students had access to their IEP accommodations and the individual supports they needed to access the curriculum, we often found ourselves preoccupied with logistical woes such as securing enough chairs for a classroom or hunting down enough prom books for students to use since our cart had been broken, had several broken ones. We worked hard to establish highly differentiated learning environment in which students were met, were met and students felt individually valued. But in a classroom of thirty students, we often felt like individual students were slipping through the cracks. How do you implement ten different individualized education programs effectively when you are scrambling to make sure all students have a chair to sit in? How do you establish a classroom environment that nurtures students so emotionally, when they constantly have to compete for attention? Our classroom sizes are unsustainable and they do a disservice to our students. Please consider restoring students facing positions that are essential to their progress and growth. Our students are amazing, resilient individuals, and they deserve to be supported by the school that is prepared to meet their needs.
Comment sixteen from Christian Kelly resides at one twenty-eight Marginal Street East, Boston. Superintendent Alme, members of the School Committee, faculty, staff, and students of Chelsea Public Schools, I write to you today on behalf of Chelsea Opportunity Academy where for the past two years I have been proud to help build this remarkable school, serving as a founding social studies teacher, union representative, and professional development lead. I urge you to support the budget proposals put forth, not because we want a shiny new building, not because we want less work, but because these proposals will allow us to further maximize our potential to serve our students and to do so without further inconvenience to our colleagues at Chelsea High. Ladies and gentlemen of the School Committee, we at COA do not shy away from difficult tasks. Rather, we seek them out, inspired by our students who do the same. We instill in our students the idea that every day is a new day, a new opportunity of growth, and a new chance to correct the mistakes of the past. A vote in support of COA demonstrates to these students that you believe in them and that they matter to this city and that you are willing to use your vote to assist them in their fight towards a better future. School Committee members, I ask you to fund our school to support the students we seek to serve, many of whom are here tonight. I ask you to support their single mother at COA who has found the confidence to attain her diploma and strive for a better future for herself and for her son. I ask you to support the numerous marginalized students who through our school have found their voices in the Chelsea community and use them, advocate for a better tomorrow. I ask you to support COA for all of our students because in the face of lifetimes of abuse, trauma, and overwhelming responsibility, they have not given up on their education and everyday fight for their betterment with grit and determination. On behalf of my dedicated colleagues at COA, I can assure you that we see the potential of our students every day. You have the ability today with your vote to have a direct and positive impact on the lives of our students and those who will follow them, enabling us to bring positivity, hope, and equality education to those striving to achieve the American dream here in the great city of Chelsea. Thank you. Comment number seventeen from Karen Pierre-Louis resides at ten Forsyth Street in Chelsea. Hi, everyone. I would like to thank all the school leaders and the School Committee members for your time and dedication for this budget. Although there has been many adjustments due to this uncertainty of, of funding, it is evident that much care went into the final plan. Seeing as many of the students in the district have been directly been impacted with this crisis, it makes me glad to know the school is able to help support students and families emotionally with the addition of four social workers and a parent liaison. Hopefully soon, we can continue the plan of restoring as Dr. Alme emphasized. The resilience in our community and our educators is moving. Thank you all for your devotion and thought in developing this budget. As a parent and community member, we remain hopeful. Chelsea is strength. Comment number eighteen from Helen Tichner resides at thirty-three Bigelow Street in Brighton, Mass. Hello, I am a teacher at Chelsea High School. I am writing to respectfully request that you add additional school counselors to our budget. Along with adding more teachers to lower class size, I cannot think of a single other change that would have a greater improvement. School counselors help my students with emotional needs, scheduling, motivation, graduation, and applying to college, and especially important resource for students who are first generation college students. Throughout my day as a teacher, I reach out to school counselors when I need support connecting to a student or family. If I need a medication mediation with a student and when I am concerned for a student's emotional health or safety. Since the pandemic, I am asking more of school counselors than I did before. Their jobs are expanding and will continue to expand next year, no matter if students are back in the building or learning remotely. School counselors are most effective when they work with students over the course of four years. Adding even one more counselor would help them reach more students and would prevent counselor and teacher burnout. Supporting counselors is being there for students throughout their high school experience. Adding even just one additional position would help the approximately a hundred other students and support staff in the building. Again, I cannot think of a more powerful move to support teachers and students during this challenging time. Thank you for considering my perspective as a teacher and for the work you do supporting our students. Comment number nineteen from Andrew Millmore resides in Malden. Dear Chelsea School Committee members, thank you for keeping the budget process as transparent as possible under the circumstances. Thanks as well to Dr. Abada, Ms. Lamboy, and the Central Office staff for attempting a realistic fiscal year 2021 budget despite of no funding information from the state. I have been a teacher at Chelsea High School for the past fifteen years. Most of my work has been with nine players and supporting their transition to high school. In that span, I've worked through the classroom level consequences of so many initiatives and cuts, from improved laptop computer ratios to painful staff reductions at the middle schools to the ongoing transition towards restorative justice practices in the high school. Last night's presentation recognized that the most critical mission is teaching and learning and the most valuable resource is our employees. It is obvious that we cannot achieve our mission without fully staff schools to focus on current examples at the high school. Number one, the grade nine retention rate will not improve sustainably so long as class sizes hover near thirty. Number two, school culture and student behavior have huge effects on teaching and learning. Think of what will happen, what is already happening, if we move away from traditional approaches to student behavior but without the necessary increases in support staff and professional development that restorative practices require. It's not enough to articulate a new vision of school culture, as good and true as that may be, without building up the real tangible systems to support students and teachers. It will be a recipe for failure. In short, I urge the School Committee to only support objectives and initiatives that the district can actually support in terms of space, time, space, and staff levels. Thank you for your consideration. Comment number twenty from Katherine Anderson resides at twenty-eight Gordon Ave in Somerville. Hello, School Committee members. I wanted to write to mostly express my thanks for this budget. It prioritizes the social emotional needs of students and keeps resources directly in the classroom in a time of crisis. I feel it shows a commitment to doing what is right for students and the community in a time of difficulty. In particular, the focus on parent liaisons right now demonstrate irresponsiveness to the critical need for more community engagement and support. Additionally, I hope that the SOA money does not, does become available. I then appreciate the district's recognition that students' social emotional needs are the most critical area of concern at this time and would hope that these again be prioritized if only a portion of the funding is available. I applaud the district for transitioning central office positions to social worker positions. In solidarity, Katherine Anderson, Vice President of Chelsea Teachers Union.
Comment number twenty-one, Melissa Culkin resides at sixty-nine Rogers Ave in Somerville. Honorable School Committee members, I am a third grade teacher at the Kelly School. I greatly appreciate the difficult climate in which Chelsea Public Schools finds itself preparing an FY21 budget. I understand the prudence of preparing two budgets, one level budget and one which forecasts the types of things CPS would do if it were fortunate to get partial or full SOA funds. Even though I understand all of this, my heart sank when I read there could be a two point two million shortfall. My mind immediately went to my special education colleagues who already have significant caseloads, my ELL colleagues who are co-planning and co-teaching with an extraordinary amount of teachers each day, my students who need a boost and benefit from coordinated intervention with a teacher or paraprofessional when they, when there are enough adults in the room. The gaps that we know are accruing now during distance learning and will need to be addressed next year and years to come. As you move forward with your plans, I implore you to spend the money you do receive, whether it be a level budget or a budget with some version of SOA money in places where it will have immediate impact on the education the young people of Chelsea receive. We need to keep as many adults as we can directly in front of our children. We cannot magically resource the district. However, we do make magic happen when we keep adults in front of children. Thank you for resourcing as much as possible the magic of CPS. Comments twenty-two, Sam Factor, Eight McNeil Circle, Hopington, Mass. Hello, my name is Sam Factor. I am a first year mathematics teacher at CHS. My average class size this year was twenty-seven students. From my firsthand experience, the less students per teacher we have in the classroom, the more individualized attention each student gets. This is one of the many reasons why the increasing number of educators in Chelsea High School is critical. Comment number twenty-three, Jane Abramovich, Twelve Cordis Street, Charleston, Mass. To the public hearing team, thank you for making the budget presentation available publicly yesterday. The teaching community at Chelsea has really appreciated the more transparent and collaborative budget process this year versus previous years. We hope the transparency and incorporating voices from all staff will continue during and despite the challenging times of this pandemic. In terms of the budget, speaking from the high school's perspective, we understand why this budget was presented as a flat budget at this time. As and when additional funding becomes available beyond ensuring a safe environment in terms of new health requirements, we want to re-echo the needs of the high school to have adequate staff to student ratios, teacher to student, and support to student. One of the biggest challenges at the high school is creating and maintaining a safe and respectful learning environment. So any investment such as a new dean of supports for students should be prioritized. Either in school or via remote learning, engagement and student outcomes can only flourish with their appropriate and consistent systems and resources. Thank you for your consideration and again, we look forward to a continued transparent budget process now and into the next year. Comment twenty-four, Katie Mazak, teacher at CHS. Chelsea High School needs more teachers, counselors, and deans. Obviously, we are operating in a new world, but our community relies on our ability to properly welcome and educate all. Classes of thirty and overwhelmingly caseloads for counselors, social workers, and deans, while always problematic, will present even greater mental and physical health issues for students moving forward. The education of our students and the ability to foster community is of utmost importance. By limiting the funding for our schools, we will lose our momentum in increased test scores and student achievement. We do not need another administrative intern. We need caring adults directly working with our students each day. Chelsea is struggling and it is our job to give our community and our students everything we have. We need more.
Comment number twenty-five from Tamara Blake Canty resides at ninety-three Gloucester Street, Brockton, Mass. Dear Chelsea Public School Committee members, this email is to share my reflection as it pertains to the district's budget. Despite the cuts that were made, I've noticed that no cuts were made at the school level. This concerted action of the superintendent in our central office highlights their effort to protect the integrity of the work that is being carried out at every school and within every classroom across the district. Teaching, teaching and learning is clearly at the forefront of the district's priorities. Furthermore, the superintendent created three family liaison positions and I am pleased to see that they are still accounted for in her strategic plan to support families. Despite the overshadowing of ominous cuts to our educational budget,
Despite the overshadowing of ominous cuts to our educational budget, I found it noteworthy to highlight a few bright spots. These cuts were contained within central office, leaving our schools to continue another year of great strides in teaching and learning. Respectfully, Dr. Tamara Blake Canty. Comment number twenty-six from Kellyanne Curly resides at nineteen Willer Street, Malden, Mass. Good afternoon. In this time of uncertainty, I am grateful for the work our community is doing to support one another. It takes the whole community to meet the goals we set for ourselves and our students. I'm happy to see that this has been reflected in the proposed budgets. Our students are going to need all of us. While it is devastating to think that we may not receive the additional positions that would bring us closer to our goals, it is important to focus on the future. I am asking for us to think of the students who needs us the most and what we need to do to support them. As an ELL teacher, I could not help but to think of my students as my small groups got larger and, and larger. There is a great need not for the proposed ELL positions. With the SOA, it felt as though our students were finally being seen and supported. They need to be remembered even more during this crisis. Thank you for everything you do for our students. Comment number twenty-seven from Maureen Perkins resides at thirty-five Criterion, Criterion Street, Reading, Mass. Reading teacher, Berkwood School. I urge the School Committee and school administration to use any funds they can to increase support for students in the classroom, especially by adding a paraprofessional in all primary classrooms. Our students need the support before the COVID nineteen pandemic and it will be even more important as children come back to school next year after a nearly six-month hiatus. Thank you. Comment number twenty-eight from Matt Bennington resides at one sixty-eight Albion Street in Somerville, Mass. Dear School Committee Members, I understand how complicated and uncertain these times are, but I urge you to approve level funding for the next school year at minimum. If we receive Student Opportunity Act funds, I hope we can in fact expand our resources for next year, but at minimum, we need to maintain the personnel we have. Studies show that students who do not come, complete summer work regress in their skills between grades. For some families, the length of summer has more than doubled this year. We are doing our best to support our students online, but there is no way we can serve them as well at a distance. We are facing our school, we are facing a school year with the highest predictable level of academic need in anyone's lifetime. Our kids need us more than ever. We want to get back into our schools and face this with them. Please approve level funding or greater for our schools. There are hundreds and hundreds of teachers who want to fight back against the effects of the quarantine. We can only do this effectively with your support. Thank you for your time. Comment number twenty-nine from Louise Campanella. I am very grateful that with a two million dollar shortfall, there is no reduction in workforce. I applaud Central Office's intentions of considering the importance of consistent and familiar staff for students on their return to school. Thank you. Louis Campanella, ESL Hooks. Comment number thirty from Maggie Hagan Britton resides at one fifty-three Perrin Street in East Boston. Dear School Committee, when I see the budget proposal, when I saw the budget proposal for next year, I was shocked and dismayed at the fact that there are no new teaching positions for Chelsea High School included. I know that COVID nineteen has given the budget a big hit, but it's also given a big hit to student learning. What we need next school year, however that will look, is more teachers in order to help the students catch up and get ahead. This year, as an English one and two teacher for newcomer students in the Bridge Academy, I experienced firsthand the way that class size can affect student learning. Many newcomer English one students entered CHS between August and December, making my English one class swell from eighteen students on the first day to thirty-two students by January. The same thing happened in all five sections of English one. In contrast, my English two classes stayed mostly steady at around twenty students. The amount of individualized help that students can get in a classroom of twenty is worlds apart from what students can get in a classroom of thirty. Even for teachers with great classroom management skills, a class of twenty is an infinitely calmer space and much more conducive to student learning gains. These factors are especially important for newcomer students who are learning English, students who may have had interrupted schooling, and students with trauma history. When we come back to classrooms, whenever that may be, students will need extra support. Please, we need more teachers. Thank you.
Comment number thirty-one from Elaine Cusick. Dear School Committee Members, I have been a proud Chelsea Public Schools teacher since two thousand and six. Until twenty nineteen, I worked at the ELC. For the past year, I have provided bilingual reading intervention, the Camino's Program at the Kelly School. It has been a joy and a privilege to help my youngest students build their skills and confidence as they grow into compassionate, engaged contributors to our community. My students are smart, strong, and resilient. Many of them arrive at school with an opportunity gap. My job along with my, my job along with our families, the rest of CPS staff, and our wider Chelsea community is to support their learning and ensure that this does not become an achievement gap. I ask that every consideration be given to the funding formulas in order to maintain supports that ensure equity of access for all learners. These are difficult times. Many in our community are already suffering. Going forward, sacrifices will need to be made, and I expect that CPS will not be immune to this. I ask that as you consider these decisions, you know that CPS teachers respect that these are difficult times and there will be no easy answers. But in that context, I also ask that as much as possible, decisions be made that will give CPS teachers and administrators the funding for and access to the, the tools that we will need in order to give our most vulnerable learners the focused attention that they deserve and, and need in order to succeed. Respectfully, Elaine Cusick. Comment thirty-two, Darby Drafts. Hello, I am a sixth grade teacher in the Camino's Program at the Kelly School. It is so sad that our hopes and dreams when, when the Student Opportunity Act passed have been, have had to been postponed. I understand the need for Dr. Beta to put forward a level budget. I appreciate your consideration of doing all this as this is possible to keep funds for staff who are in front of our students. This includes teachers, paras, and other specialists who service students, and especially social workers. Thank you. Comments number thirty-three, Leanne Durigo. Hello, I would like to advocate for paraprofessionals and teachers assistants jobs in the Chelsea, in Chelsea during the next budget considerations. They are very often the ones in the classroom assisting the students needing extra help time and as well as the students that are advanced and in needing to be challenged. While the lead teachers are good at differentiating, it's often the paras and or assistants that are called upon to aid students that are both, that are on both ends of the learning curve. They are, they are needed during day-to-day transitions, test administrations, lunch and door duties, and very often called upon as substitutes. During this time of pandemic awareness, paras and assistants are needed more than ever. Thank you for your consideration, Leanne Durigo, right middle, right, from Wright Science Technology Academy. And that was the last comment.
Thank you Veronica and Mariana for reading the comments from our public and to the, all of the teachers, staff, faculty, community members who are both watching us tonight and who submitted comments. Thank you. Thank you for always advocating for our students. Dr. Beta will be responding to these comments tomorrow evening during our meeting, again at seven PM. Hope to see you there. And may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Awesome. Thank you so much, everyone, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.